Okay. We're starting?
Why not? Good evening, welcome to the August 7th, 2023 meeting of the Hammond and Borish Leckman. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are meeting in the Borish Leckman office at the Town Hall. This meeting is being broadcast over Zoom. We are also recording it. Is there anybody online recording it? Seeing none, okay. So we have kind of a different meeting tonight where we are also taking a tour. As you may recall back in, was it June or May? Somewhere a month or so ago, we took a tour of Academy Hall. So today we're going to be taking a tour of the Highway Department. Checking the weather, looks fine. First we, our first order of business however is approving the minutes.
Minutes?
Probably in the next meeting we'll approve these minutes. Since I don't seem to have a copy here. You? No. Anybody want to recite them from memory? No. Okay, pass that on to the next meeting.
Took a pledge, talking about some stuff.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. Then we adjourn. I'm not sure who made the motion, you or Don? It's like twins, seriously. But we do have an opportunity to meet our new VSO agent, Jason. Ken is not able to be here, but he sends his regards, of course. Jason, we heard about you last time. Come on up. Please grab a chair. So introduce yourself and tell us your background.
Hi, I'm Jason Briner, 25-year veteran in Coast Guard. Excited to be here. I finished my, started my training last week. And I'm excited, really excited to be here. I just like helping people. Been meeting with veterans over the last couple of weeks. I have three towns. I'm here every Wednesday from 9:00 to 3:30, 4 o'clock-ish.
In the auditorium?
In the auditorium, for now. Yeah, right now for the next two weeks I'm doing appointment only, so you can call. And then after that, walk-ins are welcome. If I have time and you walk in, you want to talk, I'll still talk to you, get your information and call you whenever I can meet with you. And if you can't meet here, East Long Meadow is a short drive. I'm there three days a week. I'm more than happy to do whatever I gotta do to help our veterans out.
I think we heard that from Ken when he came in, but the number one thing is service to the veteran community.
Yes, sir.
And do what we can. And now Pam Ladue from Wales echoed that as well. So Wales, East Long Meadow and Hammond.
Yes, sir.
Is who you serve?
Yes, sir.
Okay, East Long Meadow day is what day? Is that Monday?
It's Monday, Tuesdays and Fridays.
I thought Pam was talking Wales was Tuesday, Thursday or no?
Nope, Wales is just Thursday, sir.
Just Thursday?
Yes, yes, sir.
So East Long Meadow is the bulk of the work then?
Yes, sir. But like I said, if someone from Hammond wants to do the short drive, I'll meet with you wherever you want. I can even come to your house if you don't have transportation. Or if you just got a quick question, just give me a call. Even if I'm in Wales, I'll take your calls, doesn't matter.
Having noticed, you know, signing off on the different things, a lot of it is about the qualification. As to whether they get, and that's the thing. Many veterans, in my experience, may exceed the qualifications, but they still need assistance. And I know that you and your department have always been there for that type of thing.
Yes, sir.
You know, just because you're not on our list, you're a veteran.
Yes, sir.
You'll get our support and I appreciate that and thank you for it.
Thank you. Yeah, I helped a guy get an ID for medical. He just, did point it in the right direction. Took care of him, it was 15 minutes and he was on his way.
Great. So, you have, how do we set it up with the equipment? Were you going to leave it there or you were portable with a laptop?
Portable laptop.
But we had a printer at the old office.
Yeah, I just need to get the printer from the office and then I'm good to go. Because yeah, if I gotta print stuff out, I can't do it right now.
And Bob, we added all Jason's contact info to the website, email?
There is a page on the website on Veterans Services. And we have Jason's information, Ken's information as well, as well as Jason's phone number. And email address.
Yes, sir. And I should get business cards, hopefully, I'm hoping by Friday.
Great.
But you know, checks in emails, so I don't know.
And I think you had brought him to the last staff meeting or Ken came in and hears this?
He came to two staff meetings.
Great, great.
Yes, sir.
So that's key, like I mean, Ken said it's important that the people in the Town Hall know where to send the direction, basically. Somebody stops in on Monday, he's not here, but you know what? He's here Wednesday, so come back. Or here's his contact info if you need an answer right now.
Yes, sir, I'm also doing frequent stops once a week to the Senior Center. Just to touch base if they need anything. I'll give them my cards. I give them my contact information, but once I get my cards, I'll give them a stack so they can hand them out.
I know when Ken came to CSE, he was a little concerned because there was a lot of, there was a little bit of a lapse before we had somebody in the position that you're in now.
Yes, sir.
And he was coming up with ideas to get the word out there that you're now available. Are you seeing people come to you yet or are you working on getting your name out there so people know that you're here to come to?
I'm seeing people. I'm with three, three of your veterans already.
All very good.
So.
Great, awesome.
Yeah. And I gotta call one, one left me a message, I'm gonna call tomorrow and touch base where I heard too.
Great.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Being a Coast Guard guy. Nobody says it like Don, anyone, yeah, right there.
Perfect, made of short words.
Great. Well, the next thing, do you need anything from us?
I'm just a printer and I'm good to go.
Great.
I'm all set. Everyone's super nice and. I'm sorry, sir.
You encounter the Prince of Wales out there, let us know.
Yes, sir.
Probably not likely, huh?
Wow. Nice. All week he's been waiting to use that. So, all right, well, we're going on a field trip next. Do you want to join us or head back to Brimfield?
I'll go for a walk with you.
Really?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. You gotta know the town you're working in, so it's a better way to do it than do a little tour.
Okay, well, the next thing on our agenda is we had scheduled a tour finally of the completed Highway Garage, the expansion. So we're going to be pausing this, if you will, walking across the parking lot, through the trail in the woods. Don't worry, Don. And. It'll be light. Yeah. And we should be back here in about 20 minutes. All right, so we're not, we're not adjourning, we're not recessing, we're just, you're gonna see a blank screen, much like most of our meetings.
A musical, musical interlude.
Laura, can you put something on the background so they can hear something?
Put on the, "Your call is important to us." But we won't call you back.
I guess I'm gonna.
Yeah, we can't leave here with the, with the secret stuff.
So, saying, should I go along?
Sure.
I can wait the whole way, right?
I have that, I'll give you that.
You want to come? No, you want to?
I was doing something that I didn't record.
East Long Meadow.
Yeah, FedEx bought those, Jean.
A lot of that stuff you ordered, Vaz, I did.
They have mine in. One's for the fire department. They said there wasn't any more.
I feel like we went on a field trip at school.
All right.
Yeah.
Jean will know what to do. I do know what to do. Thank you. Not a problem. Now we need my hair straightened.
Trying these things. These are fish.
Okay. We're back from our tour. Windy out there. Back from our tour of the highway garage and I have to say myself, the garage looks in great shape. I think the highway superintendent, Anna's crew need to be commended for how good they're getting. Even though we know they spruced it up, if they weren't keeping it in good shape, it wouldn't have looked that good. So the machinery, the trucks, the play, brand new place, all look great. So commendation, Craig? Add to our tour.
Yeah, no, they look good. I like it. It was clean. Looked good. Nice three bay garage that we got. Cheap.
Yeah, cheaper than I, well.
No, they do excellent. They do good work too. We all know that, you know.
Couple needs coming forward, but they always try and stretch their dollars as far as they can. We appreciate that. So next on the agenda, I asked about charging stations. I really didn't get a sense of where we were. Listening to the staff meeting last week, it seemed like you were getting some, how much feedback, pushback from people?
I was, I had a visit from the National Grid team. I think there were six people last Wednesday. They wanted to tell me, or tell the town about the improvements they're making to the infrastructure in the area. I also talked to them about municipal aggregation and we're going to have a presentation on that. Probably first meeting in September. I talked to them about the double pole problem that we have. They informed me that there is a deal between National Grid and Verizon. And that it's Verizon's responsibility to take down poles after they are replaced. It's Grid's responsibility to set new poles. Verizon takes the old one down. So we have been trying to get this done through National Grid and it's the wrong company. So we're going to renew the effort to get that done. And we also talked about electric charging. There are, I just looked this up while we came in, 389 charging stations in the Springfield metro area. They are level twos. There are three levels. Level one is house current. A typical electric car would take two to three days to charge with house current. Level twos, these are the charge points that you see just about everywhere now. They will take six to seven hours to charge a standard vehicle, electric vehicle. And fast chargers, DC fast chargers, 20 minutes to 30 minutes at most. What I said to them was, and I said this to the state because we got that $9,000 grant, I said, it's not nearly enough. I said, it makes no sense to put another level two in. I said, Becky has invited these to be in the parking lot at the senior center. I said, I can't think that it makes any sense to put in two charging stations, which would be four ports, and have a car pull up there and stay there for six hours or so. I said, what we need is a level three DC charger. There's one in the region that's operating right now. One in Chickadee. They are expensive. That's the reason. So Big Y is putting them in, but they're putting level twos in. Whole Foods is doing level threes and it's free. So you go into Whole Food, you plug in, the incentive is for you as a customer, stay in the store longer, at least 20 to 30 minutes, so you get a full charge. Level threes make sense. And so what I said to them was, and we've had some Level threes make sense. Uh, and so what I said to them was, and we've had some, a couple calls from companies, when they knew that we got this grant, that unless we do a level three, it doesn't seem to make practical sense. Level threes, I think, not only would be important for the future, but you could also make money from them. The town pays thirteen point three cents per kilowatt hour for electricity where we buy it, apart from that metering. And what, what they do typically is you then set, uh, the price for the customer who comes in and, and plugs into charge and using a charge card. And I would think that, I mean, I would propose that we would put in the level threes, uh, and two level three stations with four ports and maybe set the, uh, per kilowatt hour rate at maybe sixteen. That's what Grid told me that other places in their district are charging, whether it's electricity out of a level two or a level three. It's electricity. They said they're charging mostly sixteen cents kilowatt hour. And figure out a good cause, like giving it to the senior center, any revenue that's generated, uh, from that. But there will be revenue and most of these electric cars, all that I know, have these iPad type devices on, on the dash where you push a button, it tells you where they are. It tells you where all the chargers are. And, and so somebody from, uh, Maritain, Connecticut, driving through, hits the button, sees it's at level three, they come and use it. And the town, again, I think would benefit both in terms of earning revenue and foreseeing what's, I think, coming our way. It may take five to seven years, but how many, how many Teslas do we have here now?
Five.
Yeah, we have five.
I don't know how many leased.
We don't know how many.
In town?
We don't know how many electric cars that are not the Tesla brand are in town, but, you know, you can see it coming our way. I think it makes sense. And this is the proposal which I gave you. They would put in Rise. I, I confirm, uh, confirmed that they are a reputable company. Based in Rhode Island. They work with National Grid regularly. They put in two, uh, sixty kilowatt DC fast chargers. And, um, provide these other services. It's a hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of, uh, grant funded services. And they're asking twenty-four thousand eight ninety-six as the local match. Now, we have nine thousand.
In your grant?
Yeah, so it would be twenty-four minus nine. And, you know, if we want to do this, suggest that we, we take, we ask the special town meeting for some free cash. And I think it'll work all around. I mean, there is some concern that you're taking parking spaces. I mean, I originally suggested the parking lots here, there's a little pushback on that.
Well, I don't think that's wrong. I mean, all of us come here and the parking lot's packed in.
Right.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry for you. You know, it's a great loss for you.
I, I agree. Uh, but I, I want to make, make it clear that I charge where I live. I never would use a charger here. I have an electric car. Some have said, well, you're just doing this because you've got an electric car. No, well, no, I don't need it. I get a three hundred mile charge when I leave in the morning. I can do everything I, I do to work here during.
So it's level two at home?
Uh, level two. You know, level twos work.
No, I mean, that's what you have at home.
Yes. In your garage, they work because you come in after the day's work, you plug in, and in the morning, six or seven or ten hours later, you got a full charge.
Right.
So, I mean, that's, I think, the usefulness of the level twos.
Part of the concern at the senior center would be, at different events, it can be full there.
Yes.
Uh, portability would be a thing. If the pro, expansion project goes through and say there's some reconfiguration, is it a hard deal to say, oh my gosh, well, we're changing the parking lot, can these be put over there?
Yes.
So that's kind of a question. Is it hard for them to pick it up?
No.
And relocate them?
I did tell them that. I did say that, uh, there's likely to be an expansion project. I did also talk with the director at the senior center about whether or not she thought it was still going to be practical. And she remains agreeable. Uh, I talked to them about the, the right location. And they said, yeah, we can put it, it depends on how you reconfigure the parking lot. But if you want to put it over to the side of, of the building, you know, that would be. And they, they, they put up a sign, you know, like EV charging. So, it, I don't think it would be that confusing if that's where they, if that's where they would end up recommending that, that it go. But, uh.
Well, does it have to, the equipment, does it pretty much come from the pole? Or is it, would it have, is there equipment that would be stored inside, or it's just pole?
It comes from the pole. There, I, I had a discussion about that as well because another company wanted to look at the arrangements inside, at the electrical boxes inside, to see if they had the capacity. But they were also talking about putting it behind the building. They said, maybe that's the best way to do it.
That's a bad location. Let's go to staff parks, trucks, them into deliveries, yeah.
Anyway, I mean, this is the, this is the proposal. I, I think there's more work to be done. To assess where it would go. Or maybe some other location, but, you know, I think eventually, uh, hard to say when, it becomes a service that more than a few town residents will want.
Is this something that's common in other towns at this point?
Uh, Munson has two.
Okay.
Where do they have theirs?
Pardon?
Where do they have theirs?
I think they have one at the library and one at town hall. So they put them on public property.
One question would be, well, how's the board doing about putting in a thing? Second would be, as you talk about revenue coming in, do we have to establish a special stream for it?
Special account? Probably yes. There probably have to be a special revenue fund.
Okay.
Established by the accountant, uh, to accept these revenues. We also would have to check with the DOR to see if, uh, that is acceptable. Or would they say it all has to go into the general fund, like all the other fees and charges that we get? I don't know the answer to that, but I think it's a simple question that the DOR could answer. Uh, establishing a special revenue fund would allow easy accounting and, and also it would give you the definite amount that you were going to devote to a specific cause or purpose, you know.
Okay. Um, the other thing you mentioned, and I know we talked about this, gosh, I think it was Hampshire Council of Government. And Ken Elstein, I don't know if you know him, Sleckman from up in that area, came to see us about aggregation. This had to be, gosh, eight years ago or something. At that point, because we had just signed up with Sincarfa and done the solar thing, it wasn't a good fit for the town.
Yeah.
Maybe now it's time for that second.
Yeah, Sincarfa, uh, yeah.
I think you're answering what Dad's asking right now.
We'll, um, right. So I'll set up, I'll set up the, uh, uh, presentation. It'll be by National Grid. And, um, they are very much in favor of it and pointed out to me, one of the National Grid, uh, persons who came into the office said, I live in Williamstown. They have a, they have a municipal aggregation agreement. I pay ten cents per kilowatt hour. Right now, if you don't have an existing agreement or contract, it's at thirty-four cents because of the big boost from the last year. Uh, and she said to me that the new contracts for municipal aggregation are coming in at around fifteen cents a kilowatt hour. So, we can manage to get that done and, and make it work. It would be a significant benefit to town residents.
Okay. While they were here, we had the ongoing questions about what was happening with Chapin Road and an updated inventory of the street lights.
Before we get there, I have a couple of questions about the, the chargers. And I think Dad had a question there, and I think you guys answered it, with the aggregation of municipal rates are a little bit less than the residential rates.
Makes sense.
So that's, that's there. That answered that question. What fees are we looking to pay if we do this? It says utility fees can be paid by the town of Hampden. Is that the, the power in and the?
We, we would pay, we would pay for electricity.
So, Sincarfa's being our supplier, or our credit, however that thing works with them. Those are the fees we're paying and then we're getting money on top of the fees to cover the fees and then the revenue.
But you're getting, Sincarfa, you're getting, uh, the net zero situation where the meter runs both ways.
Right.
When, uh, at nighttime, the solar field doesn't generate power, we take power from, uh, from Sincarfa. And during the day, if there's excess power, we put it into the, through the meter, back into the grid. To be explored. Uh, I, I, you know, I, I wanted to brief the board just to say, this is what we have in front of us and there's more work to be done, but if this could be made to work, municipal aggregation, I think, would, would.
So, a couple more questions, Bob, on the, the chargers. Are we looking at the senior center because it's municipal property? Or can this go on private property as well and still get covered underneath the municipal grants?
I don't know if it can go on private property because the grant specifies public property. Originally, I, I suggested the parking lot here, but then there was a pushback at a staff meeting with, from some who said, we can't afford to lose the parking.
Well, that, that was my question, whether it's here or the senior center. You know, if this is going to be the only, one of two now, level three chargers in the area, what kind of draw is it going to be through people driving through? Are they going to plan their trips?
Level three.
Level threes. So this is going to be one of two level threes that's in the region right now. Are people going to plan their trips that come through Hampden? Is that going to create a traffic flow? Or is it going to create a backlog at the senior center? Which is why I was asking, well, can this work on private property because there's, there's some pretty big parking lots that aren't used fully in the area? And I didn't know if we could approach them and split costs with them. So it'd be less out of our pocket.
I know the grant that we have for nine thousand plus has to be for chargers on public property. As far as this arrangement is concerned, have to ask that question, but it's, it's worth asking. It might be something that would make sense for the mini mall area.
My question would be, is there a liability then? I mean, you do hear the very rare charging fire type thing. If we had it on private property, is the town assuming some liability in that?
Well, there, if it was red occurs, it's usually pretty open in the back over there too. The other option is we go to the police station out front, you know, because now it's a, like a safe zone and you don't have to worry about coming in, something happened to their car, they're parking there.
Sure we could. The police, you know, police may not want.
Usually you don't see a lot of cars parked out front there.
A lot of traffic.
Just questions. I, I don't know.
I'd want to bring it to you now and then if, if you're agreeable to go forward, we'll try and answer all these questions. But, um, there is an opportunity. This is a new program, by the way. Uh, brand new program.
So we don't have another town that's already gone through it?
No.
Okay.
Well, there are other towns.
Starting.
Who, who made deals under the old program, which the state suspended. And now this is a new program, probably reflecting, uh, some funds that they've gotten from Washington because there's money in the infrastructure legislation, the BIL to, uh, encourage municipal municipalities and others to build these charging stations.
Here's a crazy thought. They were talking about revitalizing Cumberland Farms.
Make it, make it a charging.
And then people can go to the park.
A charging.
Get their exercise.
You can charge your car, go sit on a park bench.
You don't have to worry about septic.
Don't worry about septic, it's just the power's already there.
That's right.
It wouldn't look like an ice water.
So, here, I mean, here we are.
Is the board interested in pursuing this further?
I will continue to.
I'd like to hear more info.
Get some answers.
As a potential, potential STM article at this point.
And a hundred and forty thousand contributions.
Could, could, I'm going to go back to the Cumberland Farms. Could this tie into CPA funds? If we're revitalizing that, could we use that money with this project?
To make up to fifteen thousand?
Yes.
I, boy, I don't know what category you put it under, affordable housing, historic.
Nonhistoric preservation.
You have to fit it into one of those.
I know, yeah, does it fit under open space?
Certainly is your open space. Oh, I think we could, we could do Cumberland Farms with open space money, but putting it in chargers, um.
Yeah.
I don't think they fit the three categories.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, that, that's where we are.
No, I think it's, I'd say it's cheap money for what we could get out of it. I would like to hear more about the revenue in because that would make more like, you talk about fifteen, but if people used it, you'd pay it back in two years, that would be a, a good thing to know.
Sorry, I mean, sidetracked you from the other.
Well, this is what I've noticed.
The other question would be, did you have a chance to talk about, I mean, Craig's got the concern about Chapin Road and power drop. And I had the concern about, have we added on the extra streetlights we talked last year about?
Yeah.
And do we, are we going to get a new inventory sheet for that?
Yes. Pam has requested it. I think, did she receive that, Jane? The inventory sheet?
Oh, I have no idea.
I don't know if she's received it yet, but I know we've requested it.
That dovetail into another thing. You ask if she received it. Pam is on vacation this week. Are you able to go in and check her email?
Yes.
Do you go in and check her email?
I haven't done it so far.
Okay, but you can. Alright, that would be, I think, as we talked about before, we don't want to be in the habit of like, I know she has an away message. But I don't, you know, some people maybe don't reply again. An auto forward would make more sense.
One of the last times that she was out for a couple of days, I did check her email.
Okay. But I think I did see the away ma, if you're going to send an away message, send an auto forward at the same time. She gets an email, it's automatically forwarded to you. It's simple to do. So if you could check on that, we'll see if anything's coming in. And then if Pam Hill gave you an answer for Craig on, uh, Chad, was it some line monitor thing they talked about putting out?
There's also measured voltages in the drops, especially when they got towards the end of Chapin.
Right.
Because of the, the power needs up there outweighing the, the lines, the ability to transfer power.
Right, I think they talked about the gauge, they felt maybe they'd have to upgrade that because there was too much drop along the way.
I don't remember, did we ever hear back from Pam Hill? I don't remember offhand.
We heard back from a report. Yes, we're going to do it.
You've never heard back at Stax of where they are.
So.
There again, these two issues I sent over to Pam. I know when the Grid people left me, they came over here and talked to her, so.
Alright. Um, anything more on charging? Done? Okay. Laserfish, give a quick update. I know you.
It's live. Uh, the next step is to get departments to move files electronically, the, the files that they have electronic, move them into Laserfish. I've been doing that today.
That was my next question.
Yes.
So I had heard that you were moving the OneDrive to Laserfish.
Yes.
Are you moving it or copying it?
Copying it.
Okay, that's the difference I wanted to hear. Yeah. And then on the Laserfish, are there different rights assigned to different departments? That is, you've got this big repository in the cloud.
Right.
Cunningham and Laserfish.
Yes.
There's Concom stuff, planning stuff, boom, 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 but your login.
Yeah.
Sets where you can go.
Yes. Every department is able to log in only to their own files.
Well, that's my next question. So I got the link to set up a Laserfish account. Click on my name, set a password, here I am. What, where did that go to set my rights? It didn't identify, I set my username and my password. So how does it know where I am in terms of like the?
You can't. The administrator can.
Right, but right now, am I set anywhere or you're going to?
We did, we set up the selectmen with emails and.
Right, but they don't have, you haven't given them permission to go farther than their own information.
Right.
Right.
What I'll do is, right now, when we set everything up, you can only see the files from your own department.
Right.
So, confidentiality is, is preserved. We did set up the same for the selectmen. And both Jane and I were designated as administrators, so we can actually authorize selectmen to look at all the files of the town. We can do that.
So you, you've seen the buy-in as being pretty good so far?
Well, I think, uh, the treasurer seems to be, have gone the farthest right now and so, uh, looking at automating, automating payroll.
Okay. The offsite locations, the COA and the highway department, are they going to be able to do the work themselves? Or should we look for some, especially Mark? Should we be looking for some temp help to go over and help him scan if he will?
I think we have to have temp help. Um, that's the next step. Once we get existing electronic files into the system, then we go after the paper. We have spent fourteen thousand out of thirty-seven-five. We have the additional funds there to get a person who can help departments. uh enter uh paper files into the system. And when we run out of that money, uh, clearly uh, this would qualify for for a community preservation funds. And I was told, Jane and I both were told by the consultant when he was here, that many towns in Massachusetts are using community preservation funds because you're preserving paper documents. Uh, and so I think that's, that's the ballgame, to get, to get documents that are currently in paper format into the system to make them more usable. I think the other office in town that's really going to use or going to have um advantage and success with this is the clerk's office. Where now, if you come inside, I want my birth certificate.
Well, this gets to the next question, you talk about temp help helping. Would these people have to be, is there confidential stuff potentially that they're scanning it? I E. if it's the treasurer or something like that?
That's going to be an issue.
Okay.
Clear, and then I've, I've been thinking about the confidential files that that we have here. Corey files, for example. Probably we will put those into the system. Uh, other confidential information that is in the employment jackets? Maybe not, maybe not.
Well, it can be, I think your plan on assigning rights makes sense. Look at the people who are allowed to look in the file can also look electronically. Do you need that retired person to help do that type of thing? Somebody who's got time and is familiar with the town hall and coming here.
That person would have to know how to type.
No, just Dan.
Are all the, are all the departments trained and ready to go?
Not planning.
How about?
All the others are trained, yeah, all the others.
Mark as well?
They actually, no, Mark not, but they all. But we have, we have.
Becky was waiting on.
What I'm saying to those who weren't able to get to the training, Mark was on vacation, uh, is that we have recordings of the training sessions. And it's something that you can watch for a couple of hours. I'm going to watch it again, frankly, because I'm going to watch the forms side. I'm also going to be in touch with, in fact, I was called, I called the helpline today. Uh, and I, I'm going to be in touch with them to ask them the communities in Massachusetts they currently serve. And I want to contact some of those communities to see what forms they've created to automate certain business processes. Which is what I think basically the orientation now of of our treasurer, to automate certain things that he has to do. And, you know, I think, you know, that's, that's where we're going to go. That's where we're going to go.
So is Consular Aging, did they do?
Yes.
Okay.
They haven't started yet, that's what I'm saying, they haven't started.
They haven't started, yeah.
And we have to train highway overall.
But Consular Aging's been trained.
No. I thought.
However, it's all on the videos of everything that guy said in the meetings are right there on it.
Right, but I, I'm sorry, when I, I did ask that question, Becky showed none of them attended the training because they had insurance, shy or something like that. But they planned on watching the video and then come back to Bob with questions.
What the treasurer said, which I think makes a lot of sense, and we talked about it earlier. He said, you need a champion within your organization who will, who will talk with each department and make sure they're moving forward.
And that person should be fairly tech savvy, right?
Tech savvy, yes.
Like really a good understanding of, good understanding of computers and things like that.
And and someone who has some.
Beautiful vitality as well.
Authority within the town, too, to get things done.
I want to go back, so planning hasn't been trained, don't you think they'd be a significant one? I mean, they have so many documents that.
I do.
Things, I mean, that's a big.
We're gonna, we're gonna use. We're gonna use the salami tactic, so called, one slice at a time. And right now, it's encouraging those departments that have been trained to get their documents into the system and to explore the, the, the forms part of it. And that, that training, by the way, took a day and a half to explore that. And then I go after the departments that aren't.
What about the departments that have the big documents? We talked about building, Concom, land.
The large format documents that the building department are going to have to be sent out. Now, I, I expect that there will be a dozen companies coming after us. Once they know that we have the system, because there are lots of companies that will do this commercially. Maybe that's where we end up, rather than hiring someone as an intern to do it. Maybe we just simply contract with one of these companies.
But there's an ongoing thing, when we talk about departments and you mentioned planning, where every meeting, somebody's bringing in, submitting that, like, you know, every day, every two weeks, here's some more large format. Here's the plans for an A and R, et cetera. Here's Wendell probably gets, how many, I think he gets a week, you know, with different, here's revision two, here's revision three.
I know that in other towns where um they have this system, they require that large format documents be sent electronically.
That's the thing, too.
I was just gonna say that.
Right, yeah.
Part of the requirement process.
And a lot of the engineering firms basically are able to do that.
I will tell you, there are certain ones, you ever heard about signing a linen? You know, when you go to the state, you know, some of the unregistered land is recorded on linen only and not to be digitized. That must be, seriously, that must be a patronage chopped out of the tape.
Well, um, we're just getting this underway and I think it would be very useful to the town, but we're going to have to make sure that the training that occurred is followed up with and that we get people to put their documents there and do the tweaks that we have to do.
I think Bobby's a good point, that there's going to be companies that are going to know we have this service software now. Then instead of hiring an intern, we just, we have them do everything, large documents and everything, because they can do it.
They'll do it.
And then change the policies that any new documents that come into any of the boards have to be digitized. So then there's no back scanning, it's all from here on out, everything's got to be digital.
I think I've talked about our meetings, it sure would be nice to be able to make sure everything we talk about, we can put up in a Zoom meeting, just like Concom, anybody else doing his own planning, so. And then we've got it for reference, anytime the board wants to look in Laserfish and or OneDrive, it's right there. So I think we beat you to death there. We had on there a dog update, uh, just to give you a quick update, and I know, Don, you're questioning which of the four hundred dogs we're talking about. So, but this was the dog update for the Luna dog, which we do not have an update for, I believe. Now Shelley is on vacation this week, returning Saturday. But fortunately, since you have it ambiguous enough, we have another dog update. And since a dog is a dog, uh, there's an issue with the dog on South Road. Don, you're on the board, the temper the Nelson dog.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, Shelley would like to bring this to the board as soon as possible. We do not have a meeting posted for Monday. So I'm asking the board's indulgence if the A C O feels this is urgent enough to get taken care of, or we want to have a meeting basically for that purpose and signing bills only. And anything else that may come up. I know we talked about the summer schedule, you know, as needed. Not looking to build it up, but if the A C O feels it's urgent, they don't want to let the situation go for two weeks if there was a, an attack of some sort. Is the board amenable to doing what has to be done, basically? I know it's every night, Don, I, I.
I'm here, and I'll be here.
Okay, to Craig, how do you feel about a quick meeting?
Yeah, we, we have to do it.
I'll put the fishing rod away early, but I'll be here.
Okay.
Fly down from Lake Champlain.
Are you really?
Could you send, could you send the selectmen's plane after me?
We can Zoom you one again, that's fine. Alright, appreciate it, so anyhow, the next, so if, uh, Bob, you can work with Jane since Pam's not here. Uh, potentially posting for Monday. You know, how Shelley got in touch with you on the need.
Shelley won't be back in town.
I know, she'll, she's texting, so she won't be until Saturday. Uh, secondly, on those type of things, because we saw that question about the expense. Whenever we're posting a dog hearing, make sure you loop Scotty in as well. Since he is overseeing the amount, he sent an email saying that they, they've already overspent the A C O account. He is a board member. Therefore, he is in the loop, he should be in the loop in any hearing as well, I think. Especially since on occasion, he, he sends his officer out to help, so make sure he's in there. Uh, Boston A A search, sorry, Boston. Boston A A search, yeah. Um, as you may know, uh, we had an interested candidate that over the weekend thought long and hard about and decided not to take our offer. Uh, Bob, I did see you posted online tonight.
I posted, uh, on the Mass Municipal Association website. That should be up tomorrow. And I posted online. And one of the questions that I have is, uh, do you want us to post in the reminder and in the times?
I, you know, I have to say, I think, my personal feeling, during the pandemic, there were a lot of people that either left the position but have that skill set and are out there. And I put the point out that a person who was interested in anything, I said, maybe you're aware of other people, put it out among, we all have different circles. And I think there's a good potential that a local ad might bring somebody out who said, you know, this is.
I would say.
Don, you talked about the skill sets. Very similar to an executive assistant or something like that, who worked for Don DeMores, you know. Mrs. DeMores.
One of the kids.
If we put it in the papers, we want to put a date on it?
I would say, you know, we're between the things, so.
I put August twenty, twenty third. Because we're, we're up against it right now.
That's what I'm saying, we, we need applications by this. August twenty third is what you said?
Yeah.
What is it, um, how long does it take to get in the paper? Obviously, it's not going to get in the paper for this week.
No.
Did you send?
That's right, I didn't.
If you send it first thing in the morning, it'll go, because I mean, they put our coverage in.
Yeah, yeah, I'll do that.
You know, we'd do a personal call with Dalton as well and ask him, his forbearance, so. I'm sure if we reach out to Sarah.
I'll get it in tomorrow morning and see what happens. I do know that the M M A website has really taken over. Just like the web has taken over advertising from a lot of newspapers and periodicals. M M A website, uh, even in Western Mass.
But, but here's the thing, it's like that, the Concom thing, somebody came from Rain Tree trying to apply.
There may be corporate, there may be corporate A A's that.
Yeah, they're going to be.
Semi-retired.
I'm not disagreeing, I think we should advertise it in reminder and times.
But I think, you know, like you say with that Concom agent, you have somebody coming from, it was at a Worcester who wanted to be, because they saw it in the M M A.
That's right.
In the Beacon, so crazy. Alright, so let's keep pushing on that. The next two things, Craig, this is kind of like your bailiwick, if you want to explain.
Yeah, so I asked to have these put on the agenda, um, only for my discussion and to see what the board's position would be on this. Um, it has to do with House Bill seventy four and Senate Bill thirty four, an act to monetize funding for community media programming. Um, my original thoughts when I read these articles and watched the hearings, the special hearings that they had two weeks ago, was I was going to write a letter to my representatives because I don't agree with the bill. On a municipal standpoint of a town like us that were exploring fiber optic, um, we don't have community programming. I saw this potential bill, be the first in the nation, that would impose a fee to streaming services. And basically what, what it says in the bill, it says, the Commonwealth shall regulate the commercial sale of streaming entertainment services to individuals and businesses in the Commonwealth. And according to the bill, it's supposed to help fund local community access programming because community access programming is seeing a decline in funding due to a decline in consumers. Most, most people are cutting the cord, so they don't, they don't have public access. My concerns are, though, if there's a decline in consumers who are purchasing cable TV, then why are we going to be artificially inflating the programming for people that aren't watching it? Why, why are they going to charge a fee for something like me, I don't have cable, to watch streaming services, but I can't watch these community programs because I don't have cable TV? So that kind of got me a little bit, well, why are they doing this? Um, again, it's artificially going to inflate the numbers and tip the scales in favor of the, the big corporate cable providers. The, the bill is going to initiate a five percent gross annual revenues derived in mass from any streaming services. So any streaming service is going to have to pay five percent of the gross annual revenue that they sold en masse. There will be in a fund and then redistributed amongst the Commonwealth to local authorities. But it also states that the Commonwealth or local government would have no authority to regulate streaming operators' rates. So that means one of two things, either the streamers, streaming operators, Netflix, Hulu, YouTube, Google, they're either going to pass that fee on to its customers because it's going to be new, or they're just not going to operate in Massachusetts. So, in the nutshell, I plan on writing a letter to our representatives stating my opposition to this for multiple reasons. I didn't know how the board felt because, like I said, we're looking into building our own infrastructure. And you know, if streaming services are going to get taxed a fee, and then if, if they pass it along, which more than likely, that's what they do, then it's going to affect the ability for people to want to use our fiber optic service, because now they're going to be paying more for streamers. So I didn't know if the board wanted to support me in this as a, a town thing or just personally, um, sign off on a letter that I've been writing. So that's pretty much, they're just there.
Okay.
There's a lot there.
This is for a guy with a black and white TV. So this, the streaming services comes over the internet.
Yes.
Okay, and like if I get Netflix as a streaming service?
Yes.
Okay. And if I pay twenty dollars for Netflix, you know, whatever it is, twenty dollars a month, right? They would tax, put an additional five percent tax on that or?
So the way that the bill's written right now is the fee would be imposed on the service provider.
Right.
So Netflix would get, would have to pay five percent of their annual gross revenue to Massachusetts.
Okay, so obviously, in business, if, if I got another five percent overhead cost, I'm going to.
Here's the funny thing, say, you know, all the stakes to it, pretty much everyone gets five percent, you know. Recently got no.
And this money is supposed to go to community access?
It's supposed to go into a fund, a streaming entertainment fund, and then redistributed amongst, amongst the Commonwealth.
For community access?
For community access.
But community access is on cable.
Correct. That's the way I'm understanding it.
Most of it's on cable.
Right, and if they weren't on cable, then they would have their own streaming service.
They're charging streaming to support cable, basically.
Cable companies trying to make their streaming competitors more expensive.
Right.
They used to fund this, the, the community access.
Yeah, I know.
Used to be funded out of here.
But that's a completely separate thing, because, you know, they come in, cable company negotiates with the town, the town says, well, I want services. That's how it was negotiated. But now there's, like I said, everybody's cutting the cord, so they're losing that, that revenue. So in a sense, like Bob said, they're going to make it more expensive for people to get streaming services, so. You know, if you have multiple, you know, Hulu, Netflix, Google, whatever other program, you know, Nessun Plus, you know, if all of them get imposed a fee, like you said, there's no chance that they're going to eat that fee and just sell. They're going to pass it down to their consumer.
They're still going to make a profit on it.
Well, back in the day, as Bob said, it used to be cable company, yeah, we offer community access, no problem, we'll just give three percent charge to all the cable providers. Like, do you have to tell? No, the selectmen say so, it's good, you can just do it and get like, not right, that's a tax.
So they're already paying for it because it's what, like you said.
We didn't say, no, we said no to it.
In our town, we don't have community access, but other towns are paying that fee.
Yeah, the people are.
Provider paid.
Without any choice.
I'll say that.
Do we need a motion to go through the board?
No, draft a letter, bring it to us and we'll decide.
They were Monday, we'll do.
Okay, I'll draft a letter and then, I appreciate your guys' support.
Use the nice letterhead.
What, what private company would not want to see the cost of its competitors increased?
Yeah, get some of that nice paper from the retirement board.
Your preference, like font or, you know, legal paper?
Oh, that paper from the retirement board, that thing is like forty point four. On a quilt.
It's like the old Reso paper.
Exactly. Uh, thank you, Craig. I don't think there's any correspondence to talk about, we have a couple of upcoming things, selectmen reports. The senior senate building committee, uh, we, Becky was on vacation, our next big thing is on the twenty first. We actually have a walkthrough by vendors. So that's our next meeting, we're actually meeting a little later in the day, one o'clock and then two o'clock, we put it out to vendors to walk through. Uh, the email address was set up and distributed to the chair and other members, so that's moving along. Uh, that was the walkthrough part, planning, as you know, uh, Jason Baroso stepped down from planning work, uh, work and family concerns came forward. They, they're preparing to advertise for interested participants, as which we know from many boards. People have been hammering down the door, looking to serve on committees. Him, talking about the dress code, that, thank you. But we want to thank Jason for his, I think we'll be staying on.
Do we have a dress code? I don't think we do. I don't think we do, if you're going to probably have to get one, huh?
By the time I walked down to the assessors, the senior's also resigned.
No, he is not. I talked to Jason.
I wasn't able to, they were closed.
Okay, I talked to Jason about that. He's staying on that, and he feels that, obviously with the chief assessor and, and Jane as well. They're well served by that, and of course, Norman, Bob, so he has no intention on stepping down from assessors. So, I want to thank Jason for his service. There are a couple of people that I've heard, I heard your plan, there are also a couple of people interested in the associate member spot as well.
Yes.
Who are preparing an application, so. And that'd be something coming to a believe. Is it a joint meeting? I've been on a couple of times, I can't recall. I think it's a recommendation from the planning board to the selectmen to appoint an associate member.
Well, you don't have, you wouldn't only have an issue with that, so.
Well, just check, it's in the bylaw, so the process is in there, so we'll see.
No, it's not.
The associate member part?
Oh, the associate member part, that's in the, those you remember part, baby.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
They get to a point that we don't, I don't think we have anything to do with that.
That's what I'm saying, I think it's just strictly from them. So in terms of though, the actual membership, you know. I will say, Don, I know your point in the past, but I don't think we're going to have two hundred candidates coming before us to interview.
Well, you never know.
All right, I'll put that dollar on right now, so we'll see what happens, but I mean, if you can work with Joanne, I'm prepping. They've used it in the past, I would think a few years ago, we had a, the right verbiage for that position. Hey, we had three members that weren't picked last time, maybe they're all still interested.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah.
It goes Mark, Don, and I can't remember the third one. Was that Travis or no? There were three people that weren't picked at that time, right? That's it for my board, you got anything on fiber water?
Water commission's meeting tomorrow briefly, go over some proposals from two different quotes. I have a fiber optic committee meeting on Wednesday night. We're going to start planning our September seventh community event. Get all of all rolling in, and hopefully have more info, help by the end of the week on that.
Oh, parks, you have a chance to talk to Kerry about their proceeding along with candidates, or?
I have not talked to Kerry, so I don't know.
I think I heard they had some they were working through, right, yeah, good. Yeah, how's the school thing?
Planning committee, planning committee superintendent will be here Monday at, at the library. Ten o'clock for the community meeting, so stop in if you've got anything to say about it. And the next meeting is September, not till September, like twenty-second, because you've got to get all the survey information all together.
So superintendent at ten on Monday, it's the fourteenth?
Yeah. Yeah, the fourteenth, no, no. Well, you know, I think he was here today.
Oh, secret meeting, Don.
I think he was here today. Cancel that, it's just, it's today, you missed him, jeez.
Word did not spread down to this level, that's for sure.
Well, it was.
You didn't know?
No.
He sent out an email, I remember seeing it, I still have the dates.
I think.
He was at Mountain View.
Yeah, Mountain View, but I think he was here today.
He was buying ice cream?
I don't know if he was buying, I just know he was at Mountain View.
That's impressive. Let's see, a couple, Bob?
Oh, okay, we've been through much of my report. Laserfish training last week. Action ambulance came to the meeting of the oversight committee last week. They announced, they gave us a check for sixteen thousand oh nine oh in fulfillment of a contract to share their profits above eight hundred and forty-eight thousand seven twenty, so they're making money. And he also said that when we have the fifteen-month lookback completed, that the number he mentioned was sixty thousand more. So, we went over the resignation of the planning board member. They currently have four, but one person has recused themselves. There's a little confusion this morning.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I thought it was a recusal, I saw Joanne said it was just not available as well, so.
Right, she said to me, not available, but then I saw your email and said, use the word recusal, but one way or another, we don't have, we don't have the.
So they're going to look for a continuance anyhow.
Problem with having only four members is that any decision has to be unanimous.
Well, that's why it's important to have the associate member, because they can sit on a special firm of plan, yeah.
So, we've already mentioned the ad for the administrative assistant. Fire department administrative assistant is on the job, but being trained by Jane. Any comments, Jane? Going well, isn't it?
She's amazing, really smart, really quick, has municipal training. She's fabulous. She's really good, quick to pick up. She'll be cut loose soon.
We need to bring her in and introduce her.
Yes.
And final two things here, the Granby selectmen have approved the shared conservation agent and stormwater manager. And as of today, we are proceeding to hire or to advertise. There will be an ad in the MMA website. I'm just thinking of something else. Medford is also recruiting a part-time. If you check the MMA website, which I did today, they are recruiting a part-time conservation agent. We just have to hope for the best. This has been a long and difficult situation. And our conservation commission clearly needs the support of a professional. And we've been talking about stormwater management here for quite a while as well, so.
Your list of STM articles, I question, I did reach out to the planning board, and I'm going to bring it up again on Wednesday during our meeting, about the master plan funding. They did have concerns, they didn't really feel, we didn't, the board selectmen didn't have a lot of support for them at the last meeting, and they were concerned about that. The other thing that comes to mind, though, is that I thought the vote was to take no action. I went back and watched the video, no, there wasn't motion to appropriate funding, which was turned down. Can that come up again? I noticed a moratorium on some motions coming back within a certain time.
These funds, if they are provided, I'm not sure that we're going to get the additional seventy-five. These are two grants.
No, what I'm saying is, we have a current grant for seventy-five.
Right.
If they bring forth the motion again for sixty thousand dollars, are they allowed to bring it up at a consecutive meeting?
They can, but they would not.
It's zoning that has a moratorium, right?
Pardon?
It's zoning members that are moratorium.
If it, if defeated rather than withdrawn, for example.
It has to wait two years.
Correct.
Right, okay.
But if we get a second grant, which I'm doubtful about, since we're asking for the same amount that we asked for last year again, from the same agency, and I haven't heard from them, the same agency, by the way, sent a message last week saying you have, you know, the additional funds for the bridge design. So, one, but not the other. I'm expecting that we'll get some kind of decision soon. But if we do get an additional seventy-five thousand, it's putting two grants together. You don't have to ask for money from the town meeting.
I will say, though, I'm not convinced that we're going to get a lot of buy-in from planning at this point to even go ahead, even if it was fully funded. They didn't, I don't think they were really happy with the support at the town meeting. That we didn't see a lot of support from the town that, hey, we needed a master plan.
Yeah, I thought the town was opposed to, I thought the vote was opposed to the.
It was opposed to funding.
Well, that was the motion, but I think the discussion was opposed to doing a master plan, period.
Yeah, but I think they also.
Yeah.
Maybe if it was for free, they would have said, yeah, yeah, okay, whatever, as opposed to, no, I'm not paying for it, yeah.
Yeah, there were a lot who, I thought, said, oh, well, another report that'll gather dust on the show.
But for free, meh. But I think I also made the point how tough it is to get people to serve on committees. I mean, you do this, people have to do the work. You hire a company, you're just overseeing the work. Building committee updated, gave you that, so that's going to be, I think if we hear back after the walkthrough, there's definitely going to be a funding request at that point. D-FIBs, hopefully we'll get that number.
Fiber optic needs to be changed to funding and not update.
Right, that's an actual, yeah, we're doing, okay, yeah.
And they don't need a report from the fiber optic.
So at that point, everything's been paid for out of the grant, but the next step is going to be actual money?
Real money.
Real money, before we can start laying any infrastructure.
Do you have any sense of a kind of number? Is it six figures, seven figures?
It's, I think, you want the, the close numbers, I think it was six point three billion.
So authorized to borrow, basically?
Yeah.
That's.
That's a, a short term, because the, the funding mechanism is going to be subscriber paid, subscriber paid funding.
Correct.
Okay, so my question on something like that, is that going to require a vote to confirm? Some type of large symbol that require a positive.
You'd have to have a two-thirds.
No, no, now tell me, I'm talking about election ballot vote after following. A number like that, I think in the high school where we had to have a ballot like a week after.
For bonding.
Right.
Two-thirds vote at town meeting and then.
Possibly subject to a positive referendum vote is the verbiage, if you look into that. It'd be nice to know now, because you're going to get those ducks in a row.
And the treasurer would, would issue a bond anticipation notes, so called bands. And the bond would not be issued until maybe a couple of years from now to take out the bands when the project is finished.
How does that work, though? Because I think, according to Whip City, we're ready for the next phase of funding, so why would it be a couple of years?
I think that's the assumption that the treasurer is making. I said to him that I think it could happen sooner. But, you know, we all assume that things are going to take more time than we'd like, so.
Right, now, not to put you on the spot here for this, but if we're building out in phases, you know, so, okay, a whole project would cost this much, but as we spend this much and go here, but this much starts bringing in revenue pretty much at some point, so you're not out for the whole enchilada.
Correct, you're offsetting.
Offset, that's my point, yeah, okay.
The, the plans are, a fifty percent take rate would put us in the black by roughly a hundred thousand a year.
At what point? That's what I'm saying.
Right.
You know.
Yeah, we have to get to that fifty percent.
What do you get, those pissing over, yeah.
If I remember correctly offhand, there's two thousand subscribers in town currently to Spectrum. So we would need to pull half of those.
Right, but build out is going to take three years?
Build out's going to depend on the highest take rate, so once.
I know they said dense.
Once, once they get the, the go-ahead, then they start building out their community sessions to figure out what populations are going to be the highest take rates, and then those are the first ones they put.
Okay, trying to get a sense of, yeah, we authorize this, but we're only going to need to give them.
Right, right, it's not going to be the whole thing, right, yeah.
You know, with such a good positive cash position.
I mean, that, that is a question.
If we're only like having to front a million, we can do an internal borrowing without borrowing any money.
There's a question I can ask them, is, you know, in the next meeting I have with them is, you know, what's going to be the, the upfront, like, not the backend, you know?
Right.
How's it going to look initially, until we start rolling?
Right, like you say, all of a sudden you see, okay, I'm putting out this, oh, but I start seeing some of the revenue coming in, yeah.
And you'll, you'll start seeing coming in as soon as the, the service area light up, like immediately.
Right.
And they described, they said, they have a window this fall, if we can get the funding together.
But I think that's going to be part of the question, tell me, okay, how much are we laying it off, or when do we start paying it off?
And that, that's the only issue, and I know we don't like going off of these numbers at Fall Town Meeting, but based on the, the poll applications, there's only a short window that Verizon and National Grid allow those numbers that they said will cost to go forward. Usually it's a six to eight month window that they allow for.
Right. Okay, appreciate that. Quickly, we have a couple, these are the easements, finally, from Mass Electric, which, is it a grid? It's not the grid, it's ever sourced, it's whatever. Anyhow, this is the final copy of the easement for a dollar. They were the school lease, we're making money like crazy. Did you negotiate that dollar when you were on the board?
I was at seventy-five percent, but the other people wanted to charge him more.
You saw, I'll make him pay the dollar first.
Right, right. This is just finally, so this is the, this is the easement for the electric transmission lines up at the solar project at the landfill. Finally vetted by the electric company, the town attorney, the guy down at the food and fuel. I will say, one thing Rose said, it was important to look over, because Mass Electric will play the big dog. They will try and slide things through that are not going to help the town, and it's important to look at or make sure the town interest is protected.
And so she squared everything away?
She did, and so we have, and Mark did also agree with the poll numbers, things like that. And the locations have protected the town's things. The only issue we have right now is Jane's beating on it because they're not doing a very good job of parking out of the way when the townspeople want to use it, place. And Don's been up there, cattle herding up there. Thank you very much.
Cattle out.
They keep the grass low.
Yeah, we are looking at sheep in the future, that's something.
Goats.
No sheep. They don't use the goats because they eat the wires, but the sheep, there's a company called Solar Shepherd. They hire them out, and once a month, once a month, they come in and train.
Plus the sheep will pull it out by the roots, where the, where the goats will pull it out by the roots, but the sheep will just nip the top of it so it'll grow again.
So will they be our sheep? I would say, why don't we just get our own sheep, and then we could just turn the wool and sell hand and sweaters?
I thought we were doing that with the beavers we were getting for the beaver day.
Sheep are more discerning, I think.
Making money off those pulps like crazy.
Hey, it goes on there.
Oh, yeah. Are you checking on the opacum, Don mentioned, were they, opacum, were they coming back in with the presentation? Or they were vetting through their lawyers, the conservation restrictions, this was Mackenzie property, that was the name, yeah.
I have no information on that.
There were people that actually appeared on our Zoom thing, it seemed like they had their stuff together, so. Check your email, just.
We, we have it tentatively on the agenda for September fifth.
Okay, well, let's just verify that they're ready to go at that time.
Okay.
Fire station, capital plant, I think our walkthrough gave us a little, I think, understanding kind of what I brought up at an earlier meeting, that I think there's room for a different approach, if you will, to in addition to the fire station. I think we should investigate that, maybe through a little different approach, and board agrees. Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah.
Building again.
Big space over there.
Right, we put a couple of small trucks in here, yeah, so, all right. Anything else to come before the board? Oh, sorry, we have the invitation, there you go, to the steak roast, September ninth. Bring your own plate, correct, still?
And so.
Okay, and so we're, right.
Does that have anything to do with that piece of beef that's at the transfer station?
No.
Leftover hot dogs from downtown, Memorial Day. So that's September ninth. Saturday, Fire Department annual steak roast.
Watch your journey, second.
All in favor, thank you all.